The regular meeting, the November 21st regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. We have new microphones, so for the roll, I'm going to ask everyone to say their name, so we can test out these new mics and practice before we get down to business. Present, we have.
Patricia Pico.
Jennifer Leeper.
Jessica Gerber.
Christine Vitale.
Nick Asa.
Jen Jacobson.
Jennifer Maxon Cannelly.
Jeff Peterson.
Lila Denny.
Lily Phillips.
Ellie Solari.
Peter Murphy.
And?
Mike Cummings.
Good job, everyone. Ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Ms. Leeper, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with the agenda, I just want to clarify, the Board of Education usually has its organizational meeting in November. This is a regular meeting tonight primarily because the, when we set the schedule a year ago for this meeting, we thought the town inauguration was going to be on November 18th. It's actually going to be November 25th, so we are waiting to have the organizational meeting until our new board member is seated. Ms. Rotelli is in the audience, so congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing you in a few weeks at the table. Okay, student reports. Fairfield Ludlow, why don't you go first?
Well, to start us off, last Saturday, girls volleyball brought home the huge FCAC title for Ludlow for the first time since 2015, and they also progressed all the way to the state semifinals yesterday. Next Wednesday, Ludlow will also be welcoming back all of their former graduates for Alumni Day, and we look forward to hearing all that they have accomplished since leaving Ludlow. Alumni students and current students alike will also be coming together on Thursday to cheer on Ludlow for the annual Ward Ludlow Thanksgiving football game. And also coming up after Thanksgiving break on December 6th, Ludlow will be hosting a Career Day. Career Day offers students the opportunity to learn about career paths from professionals in a variety of fields and industries, and I know I personally look forward to listening in on a presentation from a lawyer and a clinical psychologist. On November 6th, ninth grade students and parents attended the freshman forum on vaping and other risky behaviors. Michael DeLeon, founder of the anti-substance abuse nonprofit Steered Straight, Inc., spoke about his experience with drugs and the long-term consequences. The other grades were also given the same presentation and spoke highly afterwards of Mr. DeLeon's frankness on the subject. Ludlow has recently done a revamping of its internship program, extending to cover career-oriented interviews, resume help, and an overall Do What You Are initiative in conjunction with Navions. Seniors are incredibly excited to participate, not just to build connections, but to pursue their passions. Bella Boutique, Ludlow student-run store Bella Boutique, will be returning for the holidays, teaching students about market trends, design, and cost, all while offering a dazzling array of clothes, crafts, and accessories. We also have the play, The Great Gatsby is set to premiere on Friday, December 6th, and will have another performance on Saturday, the 7th. Our cast and crew has been working diligently to put on one of our best fall plays yet, so we hope you come.
Failed. I didn't hit my button there. We'll now hear from student representatives from Fairfield Ward.
Hi, so this week, we finished up our fall concert series, and that went really well for all of the music departments included. And this weekend, we're starting up the fall drama production of The Children's Hour, so that'll be this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This past week, we took the best survey to gauge the students' mental health climate in the school, and everyone in all the grades had to take it, so we were able to get the results from that. Last Wednesday was World Kindness Day, so Ward participated in that by having people wear red. Also able to have Mr. Norbum, the CEO of GE Japan during the Fukushima nuclear meltdown, he was able to come to the school, and he came in to talk to the science department and the students there.
So just like Ludlow, our fall sports seasons are wrapping up. We are proud of all of our teams for their great performances, but we especially want to congratulate the boys soccer and girls volleyball teams, who both made it to the quarterfinals in states. We also celebrated our student athletes, who are going on to play in college with a signing ceremony just last week. We are so proud of their commitment and hard work and wish them the best next year, but for all families and other people who are not able to attend, there will be other signing ceremonies in the future, so don't worry. A guest author, Paul Volponi, visited our school this week and met students in the learning commons. He discussed many of his own impressive published books and also gave advice on the writing process itself, which was really interesting and helpful for students. Last night, the Best Buddies Club hosted a Friendsgiving for all the members and families. Buddies and peer buddies were able to enjoy some delicious food, socialize, and some members even were able to give speeches about their own experiences in the club, so it was a great night. And last but not least, we have our Thanksgiving football game against our town rivals. We are looking forward to hopefully walk away with a win this year, and we also wanted to wish the board a great Thanksgiving, and we hope to see you at the game.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our student representatives? Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
Just to clarify, at the Thanksgiving game, isn't that also served as an opportunity for members of the public to bring food donations? Does that take place at that game? I'm not sure if it's for Operation Hope or anything like that.
Yes, it does.
Yes, in addition to that, I do know that our cheerleaders are doing a pie drive at the game, so they will also be doing that, if that helps answer that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Happy Thanksgiving to you guys as well. You're welcome to stay, but also, we understand if you have other things that you need to do tonight. So thank you, and enjoy the holidays, the holiday spirit, and have fun at the game. We'll now take public comment. If any members of the public would like to speak to agenda items, I invite you to step forward. Seeing none, we're moving on to New England Association of Schools and Colleges report for Mr. Hatzis. Mr. Cummings, do you have anything you would like to say first, or can we just have Mr. Hatzis come up?
There we go. I would only say that, as the Board is aware, both of our high schools have to periodically be accredited, go through an accreditation process from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Fairfield Ludlow is one of the last high schools in New England to go under the, what I would still call the current process. Fairfield Ward is one of the first schools to go through the revised process. So while it's always hopeful to have our schools on the same schedule, the process itself is going to be somewhat different, and you'll see that when it's Mr. Cavanna's turn to come up and talk about his accreditation report.
Yeah, there's a presentation. Thank you. Not sure we want to look at it that way. Thank you, everyone. Greg Hatzis, Headmaster, Fairfield Ludlow High School. And as Mr. Cummings said, this fall is actually the last season for any high school that is going to be going through what they call the old process of the accreditation. And anybody after this fall will be undergoing the new process, and Fairfield Ward is one of those. So I'll talk a little bit about that. But, so our visit was last March, 2019, and I'm going to cut to the chase. The recommendation from the Commission of Public Schools is for continued accreditation status. That is not really a surprise to anybody. I think a school in a district of our stature, there was never really a question about that. But the, as they say, the devil's in the details. And so it's the report itself and the details that it provides are what will drive a lot of the work that we will be thinking about moving forward. I want to just do a quick shout-out to our steering committee, who was in charge of this whole process. Our chairs, Katie Rawl and Karen Sultan-Rike, wanted to be here tonight. Ms. Sultan-Rike has been the coach of our Ludlow field hockey team, and they just ended their season last night with their banquet. And also, Ms. Rawl had a baby last week, so I told them they could have the night off. These are the members of our steering committee, and as well as every one of the standards, which you'll learn about in a minute, had two co-chairs. And so these were all the staff that were involved in leadership positions regarding this process. Quick background, back in the fall of 2017, we started our self-reflection process, and that takes about two years to do. A lot of meetings, a lot of time, a lot of professional development, time taken with staff, taking a deep dive into all of the standards and indicators that NEASK asks us to look at and report out and write the report. Then the visit was in 2019, so in that cycle, that's where we are. Next, if they find anything that was egregious, we would need to do an immediate follow-up report. I'll keep you in suspense if that's going to happen for us. And then in two years, we have to submit a progress report based on their recommendations in the fall of 2021, and then a five-year progress report in the spring of 2024. From there, we will then begin the self-reflection process again in 2026, have a collaborative conference visit, which is part of the new system, two years before the visit, and then finally, the decennial visit in 2029. Little background, so in, from 2008, which was the last visit of NEASK, the school had, till 2012, the school had three different housemasters, headmasters. Obviously, as you know, anytime you change leadership in a school, it's not that it's disruptive, but if you're, it's hard to build momentum with certain initiatives. And so for all of the things that came back to Fairfield Ludlow from the 2008 decennial report, some of those initiatives may not have gained traction. In 2012 and 13, which was the year that the five-year report was due, they hired their fourth new headmaster, so that's four in five years. A new Webster Housemaster, new director, so three of the five administrators were new that year. That was the year of Hurricane Sandy, the tragedy of Sandy Hook, the loss of the Warner House roof, the Blizzard Nemo, the infinite campus rollout. And, you know, with all of those days lost, our last day of school was June 27. The five-year report that that new headmaster had to submit included 55 recommendations, or a response to 55 recommendations that were made from the 2008 decennial report. So that was what we walked into back in 2012-13. Since 2013, this are the, these are some of the changes that have occurred at Fairfield Ludlow High School. Many of them as a result of those 55 recommendations, but many of them because they were the right thing to do for students. So as a quick list, the new daily schedule, the advisory program, the overhauled safety and protocols and infrastructure, major building projects, including six classrooms, two science labs, and the expanded calf and a new roof. We replaced all the windows and locks in the building. We implemented a new teacher evaluation plan. We created professional learning teams to allow, or what we call PLTs, to allow collaborative time for teachers embedded in their schedules. We restructured the housemaster supervision structure and the learning center services. We implemented school spirit initiatives and implemented a one-to-one technology initiative. We initiated, which had not existed at Ludlow before, school climate committees, SRBI, school safety committee, school improvement team, tools for schools committee, and a bunch of other ad hoc faculty committees. We went from CAPT to SBACK to the SAT and introduced the PSAT in grades 11, 10, and 9, all students free of charge to families. Expanded school counseling program, implemented academic expectations, Falcon footprint, vision of the graduate work, continue to support and expand the senior internship program, implemented course name changes, and we'll say we explored options regarding grading practices. And we've various other incidents of frozen sprinkler heads, flooded rooms, air quality testing, PCB removal. We introduced social-emotional learning supports, all new curriculum documents for all the departments in the last seven or eight years. And in that time, hired a new director of people services, a new head secretary, new head custodian, new athletic director, six housemasters, three of whom are still there. Two were ceremoniously stripped of their titles of housemaster from Ludlow and hired as middle school principals here in the district. And we've had three superintendents plus a few interns. So that's what's happened since 2013. This is a quick slide, just so you see the people who came to visit us were real people. They are members of the high schools all around us. Some are in our cohort dirgs and some from various other districts. So a lot of different perspectives, which I think was very helpful. We are assessed on seven standards. And each of those standards has between four and 13 indicators with very specific attributes of a school that they were looking to find to gain evidence or to review the evidence that we were providing of their existence and then make a comment on them. From there, they are going to give us commendations as well as recommendations. So I'm going to go through each standard, and I'm going to share with you the commendations, the things that we celebrate, and the recommendations. Now, when you see it in red font, what that means is that that became a highlighted recommendation that we need to make sure that we respond to in that two-year progress report. Many of you have seen the letter that they sent us, and that letter summarizes many of the recommendations. And anything that's on that letter is counted as a highlighted recommendation for us to respond to sooner than later. This will be the most boring presentation that you have all year, and, but unfortunately, I am required to share each and every one of these with you in a public forum, so here we go. Commandations, and this is not the boring part, this is the fun part. The grounding of core values and beliefs and research-based practice, the core values that are central to the school's culture, and the Falcons acronym that drives student participation in school and community activities. And in case you're wondering, yes, in fact, the Ludlow acronym predates the very famous award acronym. You know, sometimes we believe actions speak louder than words. I'm just kidding. But I think both schools adopted this approach as a way to share its core values, and I think in many ways, they're both very successful. The recommendations for standard one are to provide opportunities for teachers to embed our core values, beliefs, and 21st century learning expectations. When you see that phrase, you read academic expectations. That's their terminology. And they want teachers to have an opportunity to embed those in the curriculum. And they also want us to create and implement opportunities for teachers to collaborate on the collection, aggregation, and assessment of evaluative data in order to examine its implications for the review of school core values, beliefs, 21st century expectations. So that pretty much is data teams. For commendations of the curriculum, sufficient instructional materials and appropriate technology, purposely scheduled PLTs, the sufficient support provided by the library media center to allow teachers to implement the curriculum, and the adequate staffing levels to implement the curriculum. Actually, that picture is from last week. The representatives from Ward mentioned the author, Paul Volponi. He also came to Ludlow, and that's just, you know, that was just last week. It's a vibrant center for our building, and we're really proud of all that they do there. And NEASK felt the same way. As for recommendations, and I think the curriculum standard was the one which we think we received the most feedback. First of all, to develop and implement a common curriculum template. And although we have a lot of similarities between all the curricula that we have, I think over the years, as there have been tweaks to the template, they are now played out in how, if you look at all of the curricula all at once, and I think that's what they discovered and commented on. Ensure that the written curriculum is taught, is the taught curriculum. Create and implement vertical articulation between sending schools and high school. Utilize the PLTs to inform areas for curriculum revision. Create and implement a common formal written curriculum for the English department. Develop and implement common formative and summative assessments in the curriculum documents between like courses and explicitly tie the school's academic expectations to the curriculum documents. In the area of instruction, our commendations are the wide variety of instructional technology tools, including the one-to-one Chromebooks and extensive multimedia tools for the wide variety of academic and elective courses. They were very impressed with our elective offerings. The Falcons acronym that reinforces core values, beliefs, and learning expectations in all school settings, and the funding and support for teachers to become reflective practitioners and engage in professional development opportunities beyond the school and district-based professional development. In instruction, the recommendations include: Design and implement a plan to standardize the teaching practices and collection and evaluation of data across all departments, which is a little bit of an overlap from what we heard before. Design and implement a plan to develop interdisciplinary opportunities for all students. Provide training focusing on best practices regarding the use of technology. Develop and implement a plan, including appropriate resources for the implementation of district and building-level initiatives around authentic performance tasks. And design and implement organizational structure to serve as a conduit for teacher concerns around curriculum and instruction as well as for support of teachers within the classroom setting. This one stands apart a little bit, so just to have you focus on that. It is, it's speaking to organizational structure versus some of the specifics around the curriculum and instructional practices. In the area of assessment, what they wanted to highlight as accommodation were the development of the academic expectations and indicators and rubrics. They visit many schools that don't have them developed, and, you know, we were proud that we have had these for a few years. The consistent articulation to students about what they are expected to know and be able to do prior to each unit of study, as well as which of the school-wide learning expectations will be assessed. The provision of specific and measurable criteria for students, success to students prior to summative assessments, such as rubrics and defined targeted high levels of achievement. The employment of a wide range of formative and summative assessment strategies and a variety of creative and differentiated assessments, and the provision of specific, timely, and corrective feedback to students for the purpose of the revision and improvement of their work. Prior to their visit, one of the things that we do is we collect examples of student work and of tasks from all the different departments, and we provided them several boxes, anybody who's been through this process, of those samples, so they had a number of things to look through, as well as meet with individual teachers. And the teachers had to bring a sample of an assessment that they were using in class with a rubric to explain how they use it in the class. The recommendations for assessment was to establish consistent benchmark dates to share whole-school achievement of each of the school's academic expectations, including a report to stakeholders. Design and implement common summative assessments for all courses. Design a process for more consistent use of summative assessment data to revise curriculum and prove instruction. And design and implement a process to communicate with and provide professional development for teachers. So I know that, sorry, this is a lot, I understand. But this standard, we were really proud of. They had a lot of commendations for us here. The Falcon Footprint Initiative, they were very high on. The consistent academically challenging courses. Consistent formal time set aside in the schedule for students to interact with teachers, which is basically homeroom, but also advisory and clubs. Scheduled time dedicated to professional discourse and development, the PLTs. The class sizes, they liked. The collaborative development of the academic expectations. The supportive and meaningful relationships. This is my favorite bullet. The supportive and meaningful relationships that teachers develop with students through a variety of means which enhances the respectful and safe environment that increases student engagement and achievement. I would put that on a plaque in front of my building every day. I'd be very excited. And now for my second favorite bullet. The collaborative relationship among the school board, superintendent, and principal, which allows the principal appropriate levels of autonomy to support achievement on the 21st century learning expectations for all students. The recommendations include, in school culture and leadership, to continue to explore ways to increase more opportunities for heterogeneous grouping. Provide targeted and intentional professional development that afford teachers ways to implement consistent improvement practice across content areas. Reflect on how best to use the evaluation model to support the work of the counseling services and support, student support faculty to meaningfully improve their practice. As you remember, their plan is a little bit different than the teacher evaluation plan. And design and implement an organizational structure to increase inclusion of teachers, parents, and students in the decision-making process. School resources includes, the commendations include the robust and comprehensive system of supports, including school counseling, mental health services, and students struggling academically, emotionally, and behaviorally. See, I call this the budget slide, because I, to me, for them to highlight these particular recommendations, I think sends a strong message about what makes our school so great and things that we would want to defend when things get tight. The number of general ed programs and interventions to meet student needs to allow for success of all students within the inclusive learning environment. The innovative learning initiative, including Chromebooks for all high school students. And the extensive diverse and differentiated collection of print and digital resources that support curriculum and independent learning for all students and are responsive to student and staff needs. For school resources, the recommendations revolve around the SRBI process. In particular, the timely and coordinated referral process, implementation plan, and clear exit criteria, as well as collecting specific progress monitoring data for students receiving supports. And these are things, as I'll point out in a minute, are already in process. The last standard is community resources. That's a great picture of the, a drone took that, so. The consistent and dependable funding for instructional programs, development, and supplies. The strategic and creative plan to purposely fund capital improvements. You guys should all pat yourselves on the back for this one. And the reimagined Library Learning Commons that encourages innovation and achievement of school-wide learning expectations. The ongoing renovation and maintenance of major areas of the plant and site, including turf fields, parking areas, roof, and building additions to impact student learning. The commitment to the safety and well-being of the student body through the funding of initiatives and resources, and the productive relationships with businesses, higher education, community organizations to foster authentic learning opportunities for all students. And lastly, the recommendations for community resources are to ensure adequate and organized storage space for academic and maintenance supplies. And lastly, ensure adequate and dependable funding for cleaning and updating of the heating and cooling systems across the school to provide comfortable learning environments for all students and staff throughout the building. And they came in March. I wish they had come in May or June. So that is, those are the, all of the commendations and recommendations. If you were keeping track, I mentioned the 55 recommendations back in 2008. There were 27 listed for 2019, which is, I think, a respectable number and something that's very manageable for us. So what's next? The staff who submitted the report, that our own self-reflection report prior to NEASK visiting, came up with our own two-year targeted plan, just before they even gave us the feedback. And what I found great was that much of what we felt was necessary and the teacher committee felt was necessary aligned very much to some of the recommendations that were made by NEASK. So implement the academic expectation rubrics consistently through collaboration. Establish strong connections between students, parents, and teachers to ensure that all stakeholders are included in decision-making. Develop a process for effective use of time for teachers to work together on interdisciplinary opportunities. Communicate the SRBI process and continue to develop intervention strategies and exit criteria, and adapt the advisory program to be more reflective and relevant to the students' needs and interests. So these were our self-chosen targeted areas. These are some of the standards and recommendations that are already underway. So you might, that might have been a question that you would have had tonight. So the common formative and summative assessments, teachers are working on. Authentic performance tasks, as well as alternative instructional strategies. Standardized teacher practices and collection and evaluation of data. Professional development and consistent improvement practices and embed the new academic expectations. Increase inclusion of teachers, parents, and students in the decision-making process, and ensure timely and coordinated referral process. So these are, I just highlighted these six because I think that they are, because they are things that we have all committed, both in the district improvement plan as well as our school improvement plan. You know, there are many others that are, that are sort of in the works as well or being thought about, but I wanted to highlight these. Mr. Dwyer, I know you always ask this question, as do many of you. What are the budgetary implications for some of these? So I just picked the three that may come up. Design and implement an organizational structure to serve as a conduit for teacher concerns around curriculum and instruction as well as support for teachers within the classroom setting. This potentially has an impact on, well, it may include staffing. Mr. Cavanna and I shared some ideas with Mr. Cummings, Ms. DC, and the Central Mr. Cavanna and I shared some ideas with Mr. Cummings, Ms. DC, and the central office staff, so this may come up during some of the budget discussions. Ensure adequate and organized storage space. And then the whole HVAC stuff, right? Heating and cooling. You know, just to make another plug, sure would be great for students to be able to sit in a classroom that isn't 90 degrees. The other budgetary implication may, the process at Fairfield Ward coming up. So just to help you understand that a little bit, as a review, Ludlow finished its decennial visit. We were not asked to do anything, there was no egregious follow-up that was necessary or an issue, so we are, I shouldn't say off the hook, but we will, our next submission will be the two-year progress report based on those 27 recommendations, followed up by a five-year progress report. And then while we started ourself, we'll start our self-reflection process at Ludlow in 2026. Ward began that process in 2017. In 2018, they had their collaborative conference a year ago. And as you can see, that's, the red arrow is where Ward is, and they'll have their decennial visit in 2020. So Ward will need some budgetary allocation regarding the visit for the 2021 school year. You saw all those names of the visitors that I shared on the screen. While their committee may not be as big, it's still, it's a lot. There's a lot of folks that are coming, and we have to put them up in hotels, and we have to feed them, and you know, that's part of the process. So as a summary, we are very proud of our many accomplishments. We provide an excellent educational experience to our students. We provide exceptional support services to our students. And we have a very supportive community, and we feel very lucky to have that. We know that we can strive to be better in areas related to curriculum development, formalizing, standardizing, some assessment and data practices, expanding opportunities and awareness of our communication lines, and to fully implement a responsive intervention system. So those are my highlights, and that's our Falcon footprint. Thank you very much.
Thank you to those board members who attended the Niasq visit back in March. I don't think we ever really talked about that. There's a lot of information here, I'm sure we have a lot of questions. Going to ask board members to maybe think of the highlights right now and follow up with Mr. Hatzis, you know, at a later date, because I don't, not trying to, not trying to stop the conversation, but there's a lot to unpack here. Put your finger on the mic. Okay, Ms. Max Canelli.
Thank you. First question, actually, was to Mr. Cummings, and this is something that hadn't occurred to me in all our talk of Niasq. You referenced at the beginning that they come, that these visits are something that all high schools are bound by. I was wondering, where does Walter Fitzgerald campus fit into this whole idea of Niasq?
Because Walter Fitzgerald is a campus of our two high schools and not an independent high school, it would not require the Niasq visit.
So there's no evaluation of the work being done? Obviously, we're internally doing it, I'm not taking anything away from that, but there's no external viewing of what's going on there?
That's correct.
Just wondering. First of all, Mr. Hatzis, I'm sorry, I should start by saying thank you for, there, first time, forgot. And one thing I'd wanted to comment on was on page three of our handout with that slide you have of 2013 to the present. Normally, seeing that much text on a single slide would drive me nuts, and I loved that you did it for this, because it really added to the impact and just, I think it's a great reminder to everybody of just how much is going on at these schools. These schools do not run themselves, there's an awful lot going on all the time. So very much appreciated that slide. One question that I had, I'll try to skip some. When they made the comment of ensuring that the written curriculum is the taught curriculum, I was wondering if you can reflect, enlighten us a little bit on what exactly they were getting at with that?
So I think in their review of the curricular documents, they're, part of their process is to talk to the teachers about what was being covered in the time period in which they were observing classes. And then to do a comparison with, you know, where do I find this, you know, in a curriculum document? And what I have found in my work with Niasq, both as a visitor and being a visitee and talking with other principals, they have a very specific definition of what they think the curriculum is. And some districts, and I think includes our own, sometimes that definition may be a little bit different. For instance, some might argue that a curriculum document should include very specific lists of the assessments that are given. It's been our practice in Fairfield that we use the curriculum, and there's a pacing guide that is a separate document. I think Niasq would see those two documents as being a part of the same. So where they did not necessarily see some of the more direct spelling out of units of study, not so much the units, because those are in our curriculum documents, but some of the day-to-day lesson planning or assessments, specific common assessments that would be used, that might be an area of growth for us. But they were, you know, where our teachers tend to have a little bit more freedom in that regard. Our teachers are required to teach the curriculum as it's been approved by the board, and also to be consistent both across the two high schools and within their departments. But that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody is going page by page in a document. So there's a little bit, it's somewhere between a day-to-day prescriptive, you know, list of things to do and total chaos. We are nowhere near either of those ends, and so I think where they would like to see us leaning more toward more of that prescriptive. So that's, I think, what they defined as the taught curriculum and the written curriculum.
Because that's certainly something I would, that gets me anxious, you know, when I, again, I recognize the need for a degree of common formative and summative, but to take the art out of it and to not give teachers some autonomy with that. And that's, I wasn't sure if this was getting at that, so it's interesting that you're using the word prescriptive and that I hope that there's a balance struck with that.
Yes, and I do not think that they are saying that we need to be that prescriptive. I think that through looking at all the different curriculum documents and have them be meaningful and helpful to teachers, especially if a new teacher was coming onboard, that is something that they would want to ensure was part of what we, you know, what our documents were doing for our teachers.
Whoops. As you create your, you know, the school improvement plans, et cetera, are teachers exhausted by this, or are they on board now with beginning to give input? Because I know Mr. Cummings has been very, you know, explicit about getting all the stakeholder input for the district improvement plan. And while there's the district, and then there's now the specific recommendations for Ludlow, in terms of culling from this and getting input from teachers to feed into that district improvement plan, do you see that as being something that's going to work out okay, that you have the time to take this and turn it around for that? Because it would be a shame to have two things saddled on you of, here you have the district improvement plan coming at you, but in the meanwhile, you've got now, what, time's ticking? 23 months till that two-year progress report? I would hope that they can be married.
Thank you for that perspective. While we did not have a copy of this report at the time in which our teachers were meeting this summer as part of our school improvement process, I did have an opportunity to meet with the chair of the committee prior to them departing on the last day. And so she gave me some broad brushstrokes. So I had some of the, you know, without the specific language, I had some of the input that they were going to be providing. That allowed me to share some of that information with our school improvement team. And so while I'm very grateful for the ability to have that time with our staff, because I think if anything, our staff was energized by that process, and they were, we were able to take that feedback into account. I do not feel like the things that we chose for our school improvement plan are off the rails and, you know, in any way in conflict or too far from incorporating some of the things that are mentioned here. But I also know that we have some of these things in progress. You know, part of the thing is the timing here. We, you know, did our self-study, and we submitted our final report, you know, a lot of that was, you know, a two-year process. And so some of the things that were in our report are already long outdated and no longer a part of our process. So when they came and they were reading our report, some of the things, you know, we had already moved on from and improved. And, you know, so their job was to, you know, look at all the evidence and see where we were. So some of their commentary is a little bit of reflection of things that were in progress already, and they just wanted to highlight that, okay, it's good you're working on this, you know, you should continue to make sure you address these. So we were already on top of some of these things. So I guess a quick answer to your question is, I do not feel like this will be an added burden, that we will be able to incorporate many of these things. Many of the things here are really not even in just the hands of our school. I mean, the entire curriculum standard, you know, I would venture, is something that we need as a district to work with, and as well as the teachers from both high schools and our curriculum department. So I think all of that is our doable things.
Thank you. I had a couple of the questions, which I'm going to just send you separately, but one last thing, just to throw out there to anybody, is the whole idea of the data collection. When you're looking to formalize that process and standardize that process, is part of the, and obviously, that's anecdotal as well as quantitative. Is there also a discussion philosophically of what data do we value? You know, obviously, it's, you're being pushed for data, which I recognize well, but the stepping back and saying of what value is this so that it's always meaningful? Do you have time for that?
That's a great question. I think the, we are, one of the most important innovations on that list from 2013 and beyond was when we purposely scheduled collaborative time for small groups of teachers to meet as part of the schedule. Instead of it being sort of a haphazard who's free when, we are very purposeful in scheduling that. That time, that structure affords us the opportunity to have those discussions with teachers. And I would say that different departments are on a continuum for that. For instance, you know, it's been highlighted in the past, some of the discussions our math department has had about the use of the SAT data in order to really zone in on the types of questions our students are struggling with, and then make purposeful decisions about the instructional practices that they use, has moved the needle tremendously. So, so yes, like, they value that data now, where I would say four or five years ago, put the SAT results in front of teachers, and they'd be like, yeah, no, we're teaching the curriculum and we're doing important things. But now it has become a really important part of what they look for when they're in their meetings to, and they look forward to the results now, they really do. So we're at various stages of the process with different departments in that regard.
Thank you. I recently was on a Niasq visiting team, and so it's a very...
No, it's actually a great process. You learn a lot of professional development, right?
Packed into, there's very little time for sleep, because you're sitting around, reading every document, visiting classrooms, going to what I call the dog and pony show of like, you know, they bring out everything, everybody's doing their best, it's wonderful, but then you have to sit down in a room and write this massive report and try not to miss anything. But it's a huge value when we're about to go into a budget season. Of all the wonderful things that are going on in your school and our teachers, but also looking at the facilities, many, many schools that come out of Niasq visits now get additions to their facilities. So I like that they added about our HVAC.
Ms. Jacobson.
First, thank, congratulations on getting through this process and the continued accreditation at this point, and just thank you to everyone that worked on this with you. I just have two quick follow-ups, also on the curriculum area. The development implemented a common curriculum template, and you said that was due to, you know, the broad range of our documents. I was just curious if our timeline that we implement as a board for our curriculum adoption, that we have that timeline review adoption, did that come up at all as being okay, not okay, the length of that time period, except, just wondering if that came up?
I'll let Mr. Cummings respond, but what I can tell you is the feedback that I heard from the Niasq committee is that I think with the dynamic process that occurs over the course of each year with new things that come up, you know, sometimes different departments have been moved a year or delayed a year. Those were purposeful decisions sometimes based on maybe new standards that were being, you know, come out. So what they heard was, was that there was an inconsistency, you know, it wasn't like a straight seven-year cycle. They heard different things from different departments, and I think that was all based on the individual situations of those departments and what might have happened. So I think that that's a factor in seeing different types of templates that have come through as tweaks were made, you know, each year, but yes, I think that that's a factor.
Can I just add to that? Sure, I agree with what Mr. Hatzis said. I think that that is the curriculum calendar, but most districts have a very similar calendar, and most districts go through iterations like Fairfield does where, because of either changes in the schedule, changes in the implementation of state or national standards, budget issues, things can get elongated around that. But I think also, and this is probably the one recommendation that Niasq made, I take, I do have issues with. One, because it's really not a building issue, it's a district issue, and it really shouldn't have wound up to my mind in their report. But secondly, it also portrays a fixed mindset around what curriculum documents should look like. It would be nice if a template we had decided upon 10 years ago was still relevant, but one of the conversations we have continually, particularly around both the C3 and social studies, and particularly now the NGSS and science, they don't fit the UBD models or other popular curricular models. They've been written in a different way, they're more cross-curricular, cross-units than in the past. So we are working on and have what we believe is a standardized document to go forward. We're going to do some back work to do that, but again, I really don't emphasize, I think that that's not something that should have been held against Fairfield-Ludlow.
Is that because it was under the old format, maybe? Is Ward going to be different? I'm just wondering if the old-new process has something to play in here or not.
I don't know how the standards will change necessarily under the new format. I think sometimes when you work with Niasq committees, the recommendations or the commendations may follow the skill sets and interests of the people on the committee, and so there can be sometimes that inconsistency as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I know that some parents participated when Niasq was here. Are there plans to share this with the school community?
Yes, this was step one. We wanted to come to you first, but then the community at large, the school community, obviously, the teachers and the students. So we will be, we will be sharing this far and wide after tonight.
And I think just a request in terms of, there's a lot of, a lot of things in here that are going to be budget drivers. I would ask, as you, as the information goes up the line, just to really, if the board could have an indication of, we're proposing this and how it ties into Niasq. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hatzis. An update on the environmental testing at school field sites, Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. A couple of things I want to go over, let me, let me talk about, and I'm going to include Fairfield-Ludlow in this as well tonight. So we are waiting on McKinley and Mill Hill. We, I think this was information just recently distributed by the town as well, but we are waiting for remediation plans on the McKinley site of the former playground, as well as the Mill Hill field that's on the hillside behind the school. And that's where we are with those two sites. I truly hope to come tonight and say that I had already sent a letter to the Jennings community. We do believe that we're very close to being able to remediate the Jennings playscapes. We are in process of working with the town through, it appears, the innumerable issues that arise with both purchase orders and insurance agreements and all types of things with a contractor. But my hope is that within the next day, we'll still be able to announce, make an announcement and move quickly on... announcement and move quickly on the Jennings remediation. So that is close. And then finally, on Fairfield Ludo, Mr. Hats has sent out a letter to the Fairfield Ludo community this evening about, to address some of the concerns and rumors that are in place around the conditions at the school. I think he sent a letter that very effectively addressed some of those issues. But as the board knows, we tested the area on Veterans Day. Since then, we've identified a couple of further areas that need potential testing. That was done by Woodard and Curran. OSHA was in on Friday of that week and conducted some further tests. And in the process of this, the school, issues have already been found in the school. So Mr. Hats' letter addresses a couple of those. One of those being this steam pipe that runs in a channel along the floor, on the first floor. That steam pipe had some pressure leaks. So that, 100 feet of that pipe is being replaced. But it's believed that that, the moisture from those leaks may have been contributing to the contributions of mold on some paneling or some, excuse me, some sheet rock within the, within that floor. So that sheet rock has been removed off-site, and we're going to now conduct some further air testing around that, those sites to make sure that if we're seeing a reduction in anything. So it's a fluid process in the sense of while we're waiting for results to address the, what remediation needs to occur, at the same time, we're moving forward when we identify clearly a problem right away, we're not going to let it sit. We're going to address it. So it's, that's happening. We do expect the results of the Woodard and Curran visit next week. And at that point, we'll get recommendations around any remediations that necessary, and then we will schedule meetings with both our staff and our communities to address, test the results as well as the plan moving forward. So I think that, I think I've covered what I had in my notes here.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I just want to say first, I was glad to hear that a very specific source of moisture was found at Ludo. It's always nice to have kind of an obvious culprit, and I'm hoping very much that that's a large, you know, bulk of the problem. On Jennings, it's good to hear that remediation plan is coming soon. Can you update us on what the status of where we are in the, in the schedule? I know that we were concerned that Burroughs project might not be done by the time that we'd be ready to move on Jennings. Are we, if we got a plan tomorrow, at what point will we be able to move on Jennings?
We have a remediation plan from Tye &amp; Bond. It has met all our approvals as well as all approvals from the town. I want to thank Mr. Papa George for the initiative. We're not working with, he's founded a different contractor to work with, so we can leapfrog the town, the town contractor in order to expedite this. It's going to require, just to get into that a little bit more, what it would require us to do is, the issue with Jennings is, it appears clearly linked to the timbers that framed the playscapes, both the ones to the right and left of the building, and a leaching of arsenic from those timbers into the soil. So that soil is pretty much at surface level. They've tested to a certain depth and are going to remove that soil around both those playscapes as well as the timbers. And those have to then, that soil and those timbers have to be remediated off-site. So new soil has to be brought into the site. But before they place the new soil in and then mulch on top of that, they're going to have to test to make sure. So there's a scraping off of the soil, a further test before new soil can be, can replace that. And so there's a bit of a lag time. Hopefully it'll take a day, day and a half. They have to test to the new surface, again, to make sure. And if all goes well, they've removed all the contaminated soil and they can immediately backfill. The soil will be on-site and they can immediately backfill. But if that, the tests reveal that we still have to dig deeper, then we've got to, then there may be a further delay. And of course, we're also going to have to watch the weather. And Mr. Papa George, I'm trying to remember, we have, it's 250 tons of soil? Is that correct? All right. So this, that, yes. That's how much soil we're talking about. It's like railroad cars full of soil. So it's an extensive project. You know, you don't think of it looking at it, but there's a, it's, it's a lot.
Mr. Peterson, any other?
Just one quick follow-up, just a, just a random comment. As we go through this remediation process for the playgrounds at Jennings, I would hope that we're going to put a rubber barrier in between the new dirt and any material that comes on top. This thing to the issue with Stratfield where we thought there was a rubber barrier between the wood chips and the dirt, but-
Oh, there wouldn't be a rubber barrier because if the soil is, if we clean it down to the clean level, there'd be no need to, to separate it because the soil itself would then be cleaned.
But I guess if that's the case, why was there a rubber barrier, for example, at Holland Hill or a fabric barrier at Stratfield at all?
The fabric barrier at Stratfield, from what I understand, was essentially like weed control and that type of thing underneath the mulch. The one at Holland Hill, and there's a similar one at McKinley, is just the surface. There's one at Burr as well. That's just the surface that was put under the playscape. It was the choice at the time.
Mr. Asa?
Thanks to Mr. Cummings and Mr. Papa George for expediting this and securing another contractor. And just to confirm, the town is on board with this and still willing to pay the bill for this, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the detailed explanation. I think that some members of the public don't understand that continued testing is part of the remediation process. So if people hear that there's testing being done at Jennings, it's not necessarily a new problem, but just making sure that remediation is comprehensive.
It's complete. And I will say, the idea would be that if we're able to do this, we're going to, we're going to, we made a commitment from the very beginning, any soil removal process will be done on a weekend. While the testing will be done, or the, excuse me, the removal will be done by an environmental company. A representative from Tye &amp; Bond will be on-site to also monitor air during that removal. But we'll do it at a period of time when students are not on-site. Once we're aware that we've removed all the contamination and we can proceed, then we can actually backfill while students are in the building. We're going to have to clearly be, you know, we speak with Mr. Vollo about safety concerns about student movement in and out of the building. Clearly won't work during traffic drop-off and pickups. But we'll be able to do that work while kids are in the building because everything coming in will be clean at that point.
Mrs. Gerber?
And just to follow up, in case there are members of the Jennings community who aren't watching the meeting, will all of this information be provided to them, either from you or from Mr. Vollo or just someone, just because it is, I think it could be helpful for them just to understand the extent and the time, the new timeline, just to kind of keep them updated?
I think I'm doing a pretty good job tonight getting all this information out because I've already written the email. So I just-
Excellent, thank you.
It's ready to go. I just need the clearance to send it. I'm anxious. I want to get-
Ms. Jacobson?
Just moving over to Ludo High School, the leaking pipe and the 100-foot replacement. My first question is, is that work that's able to be done without disruption to the operation of the school while that's being done?
It can be right now because there's, there's only staff are in that area of the building. But we're in a very fortunate position here in that that pipe is literally in a trough in the floor and it's covered by metal plates. So it doesn't require cutting through anything. It's as good a situation as could be around that.
I think that's all I had to answer. Thanks. Kind of going back to the NEASC report, I kind of saved this question being that I figured we would be talking about Ludo. For the adequate and organized storage space for maintenance supplies, is there storage areas in the lower level at Ludo right now that are possibly, need to be cleaned or moved?
I would say, just having walked through it a couple of times, that there are, there are areas in Ludo that are, that, there's a lot of storage area there. None of it's, it's kind of like Eaze in your house. It's a little bit more accessible than that. But it reminds me of getting the Christmas decorations out from my mother to some degree. They're in the back. And while a lot of that stuff I'm sure gets used, there's a lot of athletic equipment and things like that. But there's also storage, in that storage area, things like filters and different pieces of equipment. They're all, much of this is in cardboard boxes. They're in tunnels in the back. So I think in general, one of the things we'd have to do when we're done with this is we have to come up, we have to come up with a cleaning plan. And some of the stuff, like in cardboard boxes that have been stored for any period of time, I was saying to Mr. Papa George this week, we need to buy a lot of those Sterilite-type of plastic boxes or whatever and start to transfer stuff into things that are going to withstand moisture and hold up better if they're going to be stored there for a long period of time. So it's an opportunity here to clean some things up back there.
And just to follow up on that, we now have a new maintenance facility with additional space. Do you think that any of these materials can possibly be moved out of Ludo?
I would defer to Mr. Papa George on that. I'm always a little worried that, like my mom's ease, we just put stuff back there and we forget it's there. So that's just my only concern.
Thank you. Any other question, Sliber?
Just one question. I feel like we haven't gotten that much information about what's going on with Mill Hill, and I was just wondering how that community's been impacted by the fill that's used on that back hill. The children have been able to use the playscape, and if there's any update on where they fall in the timeline and sort of how that community's been disrupted or not so disrupted?
Well, I've not heard any concerns really from Mr. Chase. I think that the, because the playscape is accessible and things have worked out pretty well, that hill is not really a play area as it was. I think that the remediation efforts there, because that's an extensive area, or actually, where it seems to be the remediation has to take place is not that extensive, but it's on a, not necessarily a hospitable work site. That may be part of the complication as we go into there. But I, the last conversations I had with the town, which are now a week old, the, there's, there's interest in moving relatively quickly on that. I think people are very conscious of the winter coming and want to move ahead of those things. But Jennings has been the priority because it has the direct impact on the students.
Just one other question. Has the Mill Hill community been getting any updates on the process that's happening there?
Nothing more than really what the town has been providing.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Adoption of policy 13.2, relocation notice, accessibility for disabled. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 1300.2, relocation notice, accessibility for disabled, kind of a motion. Ms. Max Canelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Ms. Max Canelli, any opening comments?
It's, again, just a reminder that this was purely a matter of taking out a specific name and putting in the title so that this is a policy that, you know, is more enduring than that. This has actually surfaced as part of the unveiling of the new website as they were bringing information over. We found at least one other policy, which policy we'll be taking up next week with a similar type of issue. I'm not sure how many others there might be, but, you know, this is pretty straightforward.
Any questions to the public? Any member of the public like to comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Motion passes eight-zero. First quarter financial report, Mrs. Monsal.
Okay. Welcome to a new fiscal year and, of course, a new requirement. As of July 1st, 19, we're required to provide a quarterly report on projected revenues and expenses. That's what drove the new grant report that you received, which looks like this. Basically, those numbers are budgeted numbers. There's some of those grants that we don't, you know, we definitely don't know what excess cost is. We just found out what our Title I entitlement was. So those numbers are going to change. And those, that's just meeting the requirement of providing the report. I, when we prepared, when we were starting to prepare for doing a quarterly report, a projection, the first quarter, which we'd never done before, I decided to take, it's always been a problem when we did a projection that some expenses for special ed were in, the transportation was in maintenance. Most of the transportation was in maintenance. Summer school sped transportation was in pupil services. So I decided to reclassify that. All the bus aids and, the special ed bus aids and transportation got moved up to pupil services. There was a small amount for speech and language repairs and maintenance that got moved up to pupil services. And there was a small amount, about $18,000 in school expenses that were tutors that belonged up in the personnel expenses as a salary. So because this meeting was later in November, and we did that reclassification in October, decided to do the quarterly report as of October 31st. We had, it gives us a little more information, some, you know, better numbers. So on that projection, the, which is what I always concentrate on, on a quarterly report, that's got a projected 630 balance. The number was about $500,000, a deficit of about $500,000. Now that included the moving costs for the new maintenance and transportation facility. So the town did, Board of Finance did approve that of the 141, so that deficit's now 364. That's not all that alarming in October on $181 million budget. So we constantly monitor our expenses anyway, so we'll continue to do that. Personnel cost, that first category of projected balance of 367. Just want to point out that had we not changed how we budgeted staff replacement, remember it was 1.2 million before, we brought it down to 560, I think it was, something, somewhere around there, 590, that would have been a deficit of 262. So that was a good move in changing that practice. As far as FTEs overall, we're under budget by about 2.8 FTEs. The budget, the Board of Ed budget itself was under by 3.3, and we added a half a FTE in a grant. So the net was under by 2.8. As far as benefits go, we were showing right now just an overall balance in that category. We are monitoring health insurance closely. We did add 250 at the end of the year last year when we did the budget adjustments for this year. But we're monitoring, that was to cover the rate, we're monitoring changes, the changes in coverage may be an issue this year, but we're, it's too early to tell. Pupil service, the million, it's almost 1.1 million. About $650,000 of that is sped expenses. A large portion of it is transportation that we moved up there. Remember, we did add $200,000 to the budget last year, not knowing what our transportation was going to be, and we ended up cutting $100,000 of it at the end of the year in the adjustments. Well, we could use that. We do have a new vendor- We do have a new vendor. We went out to bid last year in the spring. And so we have a new vendor, but between rates and out-of-district placement, you know, distance changes, there's a shortage there. Support expenses, there's some savings there, the 50,000 for the superintendent search we had budgeted because we were able to pay it last year. Magnet school tuition, there's some savings that might change a little bit if there's a little flux in enrollment at magnet schools after October 1. But those are pretty solid numbers. Maintenance is balancing within its department right now, is managing to do that. We've got nothing for utilities, just way too early to project utilities. Regular transportation is over budget slightly because of a decrease in pre-K revenue. And the decrease in magnet school enrollment also impacts the magnet school grant, transportation grant. And then capital, we're just showing the current balance in, as of October 31st, was 560. We're showing a small balance there. Maintenance is holding some money to balance their budget. So those are the details. Like I said, we, you know, last year, we mentioned the 850,000 that we projected for salaries the first quarter because that was so alarming. But it's very unusual to do a projection in this kind of detail so early in the year. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you very much. Sorry, it was wrong of my voice. Can I, just had two questions. The magnet school enrollment, I'm not sure who's the right person to ask this question is to, just a rough idea of how much lower was that number than what we were projecting? Not the dollars, but the number of students?
63.
63 less than what we expected, okay. The pre-K tuition, on your page, the statement of account, grant revenue and expense, that sheet, if you go down to the bottom where it says preschool tuition, we were budgeting 229,000 and our actual is 37,000. Can we get just a little more detail on that difference there? Was it that much less pre-K enrollment or that's just what you've gotten so far?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Max Canelli?
Thank you. A few things. Back at our October meeting, we were told that the HVAC RFP information was, should have been imminent. Do we have any more information on that?
Mr. Papa George, do you know, I think that it sort of got stalled in purchasing with what else is going on at the town level, but I will let, Mr. Papa, can you just come up and give us an update?
So the answer to the question would be yes. It's still moving forwards. It's at a slower rate, but it is moving forwards. However, at this point, we are kind of in an impasse with purchasing, trying to get through everything that's going on with the town. We are having, continuously having conversations about it to push it forwards. We've gotten a lot more information to gather together to get ready to go out for the RFP. So now we're at the point for review, and then we will be going out.
And there's no discussion that that's what would be, that that money would be, because obviously that maintenance budget is extremely tight right now. This is not on the chopping block. I'm asking and saying at the same time.
Meaning as far as...
The budgeted money will stay allocated and that will go forward.
As of right now, the money is still being held for the RFP to move forward. I can't necessarily promise you it's going to stay there considering we just heard that there's a leaking steam pipe at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and we don't necessarily know what that may entail. I mean, I think that, I speak for everyone, and looking at the NASS report, that moving forward on getting numbers and more information about what the HVAC needs are at all of our schools remains a top priority, and we don't want to touch that unless an emergency presents itself.
Okay, thank you. A few other questions. I was wondering, first of all, for the FTEs, where is it that we were off? At what level?
We were down one more elementary section than we had budgeted near somewhere. Go ahead, you want to do it?
Hi, I don't...
What do you have? Where's the button? Is it on?
I think so.
Okay.
The changes were bits and pieces all over the place. We had additions and subtractions. I could provide the board with an overall change sheet if that's what you're interested in, but it's not like it was one or two big switches. It was a lot of little changes across the board.
Okay, I was more wondering about in terms of the budget book rollout, you know, if there was anything significant that was there. And since you're up here, I'll just ask about the 0.5 that came from the grant. I thought those were not allowed to replace core positions. They have to be supplemental in nature. So I guess I'm unclear on how did that defray from what was actually a 3.3?
That was the youth and immigrant grant. So it is a supplement?
Right, but so you're labeling that it was going to be something that we were going to fill and then didn't...
No, it was, we created a position using the grant money, but the creation of the position is still an FTE.
If I'm hearing what you're saying right, I apologize. The FTE is in the FTE count, but it was, the grant opportunity was new to us, and so the position was added, this halftime position was added to support students who could benefit from that.
Okay, all right, thank you. A couple other clarifications. The hourly tutors, those are for the homebound students, correct? Is that for homebound or expelled? I'm not sure.
No, those are for middle school tutors.
I'm sorry?
Those are for middle school tutors. I'm not sure exactly how they're used, but they're, they're not yours. I don't believe they're his.
Okay, middle school tutors? Could you explain that? I wasn't aware that we...
I can, I can. We, at Tomlinson Middle School, we support additional math tutors help in the building.
Okay, so that's not filled by our current staff?
Or additional hours supported this year.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that. For the 100,000 that was taken from Walter Fitzgerald, what has that impacted?
You mean, as far as what hasn't gotten done or...
I'm happy to say, as of now, nothing has not been done. The money was earmarked for an electrical upgrade and a air conditioning being added to the Zen room, which we were able to fund at the end of last year's fiscal year. So we were able to roll the money over and perform the project over the summer using money that was allocated for something else last year. So the projects did go forwards at Walter Fitzgerald.
Okay, also good to know. On line, no, I don't care about that. Not, I don't care, but one question I also had about this, that the central office staff on, so this is on the final page of our document, so that's line seven?
Which page?
On the financial report, line seven. Given that we have an interim in one position and another position which now is empty, I was wondering why money had to be transferred into that line? The very last page of our packet, line seven, the major classification and summary object? Line seven or number seven? Sorry. Well, there's no P on personnel, so there's definitely something cut off. It's the fourth line down?
On page two?
On page one. It's the full page, Doreen?
Okay. One of seven.
Nine hundred.
It's the second to last page.
Yep. Central administration staff, fourth line down.
Not in my packet.
Okay, so what was the question?
Okay, it's the last piece of paper. Sorry. Come on, we're all, we're all the, the last page. Personnel, central office staff, fourth line down.
Yep.
Considering we now have an interim in as well as a position in central office currently not filled, I'm unclear on why we needed to transfer money into this line.
That's all the central office administration. So the raises that were budgeted in wage and benefit would have had to been moved.
And those were raises we didn't anticipate, and so therefore they're not the numbers that we budgeted for?
No, we don't, we don't budget them in any of the non-union positions. We don't budget, if it's not a contractual increase, we don't budget in the line item. We budget in wage and benefit. And then when the wages, when the increase is determined, it's transferred.
Okay, thank you. Somehow in year nine, I'm just learning that. Okay, and, that's it for me. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one last question, which I hadn't initially planned. I was wondering, since we're talking about pre-K and I see hefty numbers in our two buildings, I was wondering what, and this would be to Mr. Mancozzi, what we ended up with as a ratio or where are we currently with our ratio there, since it's something we talked about much of last year?
As you remember or recall, our goal is 50/50 for next year. Our goal this year was 40/60, with 60% of the students being students with disabilities and 60% being students with no disabilities, non-disabled peers.
And we are...
Where we're at, we're nearly at 15 in all classes. We're at the 40/60 in most classes. In some classes, we're below that.
Below that meaning more towards 30/70?
Correct.
Okay.
If you want a full breakout of each section of what the ratio is, I can get that to you.
But you would also consider this to be numbers that are still in flux? I mean, we're...
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We look at our ECC numbers every week.
Any more questions, Mrs. Max Canelli? Mr. Asa?
Just being that the Mill Hill boiler was listed here and we're in the heating season, can we just get an update on that? Whether it's fixed, working, and what the actual cost may be? Mr. Papa George?
The Mill Hill boiler went out to bid. The bid has been awarded. We are currently waiting for them to begin work. They recommend, they're saying approximately four weeks from start to finish. It's an off-the-shelf unit, so there shouldn't be any lead time with getting supplies. We had originally anticipated around $150,000 for this project. When it went out to bid, our lowest bidder came in at 60, I want to say $62,000, but I don't have it in front of me.
So what are we doing now for heat in the building with just one boiler?
The one boiler is sufficient to heat the building. It's when we get into the negative numbers that we really need the second boiler to kick up.
Okay, so we anticipate that by beginning of January, we should be up and running with two boilers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Papa, just stay there. And you may not know the answer to this question. The solar projects at any of the schools, I know they were delayed this summer, are any of them moving forward during the school year?
Yes, they are moving forwards at a slower rate. We just had Roger Ludlow Middle School, they did call before you dig, they did their sound pierings to see the soils beneath the pavement. So it is moving along. I can't give you much more on that right now.
That's fine. I just wanted to know if it was something that we might see it installed this school year, because I know when we were making adjustments last year, we were sort of expecting to have some savings?
The hope would be Roger Ludlow Middle School at the minimum. Hopefully, we would actually see Roger Ludlow Middle School and Burr up and running before the end of this fiscal year. So that, that's our anticipation, but it's no guarantee at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Actually, Mr. Papa George, you can come back because you're up next. First reading of the 2020-2021 capital non-recurring projects. Can you just take us through, we have...
You should, you should have the non-recurring book in front of you. I know a couple of questions came up was, the two projects you won't see there are the Osborne Hill roof and the Walter Fitzgerald project, which will be capital projects. And we're working to get that on your December calendar for a read.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Max Canelli?
Yes, well, first, one project that I had thought we were going to see, and I actually don't remember the details too well, but there was a Stratfield project last year that did not get attended to, and we had been told that we would be seeing this now. So I was wondering if you could give us some more details about what happened with that?
I believe the project you're talking about is the Stratfield roof that was having leaking issues, ongoing leaking issues, I should say, for six to eight months. So it was determined that the best course of action would be to replace that section of the roof. With working with our roofing PM contractor and our HVAC contractor, it was determined that the leaks were actually from the HVAC units and not from the roof itself. So we were able to make the needed repairs to the HVAC systems. And our roofing PM contractor at this time is not recommending replacing the roof because it has not been to its full life expectancy.
Well, thank you for pursuing that more. Is that something that gets covered by a warranty?
Some of it did. Some of it was minor repairs, so it wasn't anything that you would see on your operating budget as an increase.
Excellent. Okay, my other questions, first regarding the elevator, I just want to get to that page. There was reference in the text on page two, and this time the pages are numbered. On page two, there's a reference to this price carries a 6% contingency, but there is no way 40,000 is 6%? I was wondering...
Which...
So on page two...
Page two, I'm sorry.
On page two, in the text of estimated cost, there's a reference to this price carries a 6% contingency because of possible issues with the piping?
It's in the fourth paragraph down. It says estimated cost?
Estimated cost is 175,000, with 15,000 shall be awarded in the result of the bid.
Right, but then on page five?
Yep.
The contingency is 40,000?
So the contingency is the 6% for the unforeseen piping issues that could arise and also an additional, that area identifies that specific contingency with the piping, but there could be other unforeseen issues. That's why we carried a larger contingency than just the 6%.
Just thinking of somebody else, other town body seeing that, that looked like a significant math issue, but I assumed that there was an explanation. And so then, that also then takes care of a couple of my other questions, because then there was no explanation of contingency on the other projects. There was just a number allocated. So that was specifically set apart because that's something you're thinking might be an issue?
It's specifically set apart because it was specifically brought up. We actually, this project was actually put out to bid over the summer. It was something Mr. Cullen had put out to bid before he left. And then when it came time for the bids to come in, there, it was kind of a realistic fact that there was no money allocated for the project. It was just kind of put out to bid. So we, working with our contractors, they are willing... So we, we, working with our contractors, they are willing to hold the pricing for us, and that's where we were able to lock in the pricing. However, they are the ones that are concerned about what they're going to find, because at the time that it went out to bid, the elevator was down and unable to move, so they couldn't do a full investigation of what was underneath, what is good, or what could be potentially a problem under there. Since then, we've gotten the elevator up and running, so it will run through the school year for us, and they've taken a better look, but they're still a little concerned when they start pulling the shaft out, what they're going to find, and also with new codes, there may be some new requirements for ceiling, for the hydraulic systems. So that's why we, that specific contingency is in there, because it was a specific contingency given to us by them when they priced out the project.
Okay, thank you, I was wondering about that. Then, I think I have two other questions. For the cooling, the cooling tower, which references a 30 to 40-year life, and yet this was a, sorry if I got your, your question, and yet this was a project that was only done in 2003?
Correct.
That is a tremendous discrepancy in lifespan, so what's changed and improved?
It is.
Or did we really get a shoddy one to begin with?
Um, I can't say we got a shoddy one to begin with. We were told by our engineer that came out to look at it, that there's a couple of issues there. Originally, when they, we installed that unit, we were not running preventative maintenance chemicals through our boiler systems and through our water systems. So now that we are, any rust that was built up on there from the past is kind of getting washed away, and we're starting to see issues appear, because we're better treating our systems. Additionally to that, and part of the cost of this replacement project that we're carrying, is that when they put that cooling tower in, they planted evergreen trees around it, which are very acidic to the metals in the cooling tower. So the trees are basically causing rots within the outside edges of the cooling towers, and so part of this project will be to remove those trees and find a better screen solution for the tower in the back of the building.
I have to ask, have we gone to our other schools and looked at the trees next to?
The only other school currently that has a cooling tower would be McKinley, and that has a cement block wall around three sides and is open on one.
Thank you.
The things done for the aesthetics of Roger Ludlow that have come back on us are a little bit astounding, but, okay, obviously, the evergreen was well, the trees were well intended, but my last question is that with this project at Fairfield Ward, because what I would certainly anticipate as a question, is where does that leave us if someone were to do a side-by-side comparison of the two high schools, and the, the continual query of who has it better?
Ludlow High School currently has an air-condition cafeteria, so this would bring them up to an equal playing field for cafeteria space.
And, and I'm actually embarrassed, every time I've ever been in Ward, especially around the cafeteria, it's always been with the open house, no, excuse me, at graduation night. So is it only for the space where there will be doors that then can be shut?
This will cover the space outside the servery area, so if you're looking from the courtyard, the space to the right of the kitchen area where the students eat, it will cover that hallway between the two and the front area of the cafeteria that's closest to the courtyard. It will also continue in and cover the faculty lounge. So it will cover that entire area to the, I always say Ludlow and Fitz, because that's what it was when I was there, but to the fire doors at the egg, both hallway exits going out to the classroom areas.
And that was my question, is that, so that there are doors that can be closed to contain this, that it's not just going to Pequot and going to Townsend?
There are doors, but the system will most likely be designed so that the air is flowing positive, opposite from going out there, so we won't actually physically have to close the doors to create the air. You might get some floating out, but it'll be designed so that the air stays within the area, the way they're blowing and they're set up to aim pressure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Um, yeah, I had one question, um, and I apologize if it's in here somewhere. Excuse me, what's the age of the Ludlow generator that's there now? Do we know? Is it in there? I'm sorry, I was looking and I didn't see it.
It should be here.
It just says the age of this generator, but it doesn't say the age, at least that's,
It is not in here, I can find that out for you, though.
Okay, yeah, I just thought it would be helpful, just to get a sense, because it does say, it mentions the age, but it doesn't say what the age is, so if we could just get that information, that would be really helpful, thank you. And then I also just had a question. So looking at the long-range facilities plan and the numbers that were in there, three of the four of these actually came in, are lower now, so the elevator, the cooling tower, and the generator, but the cafeteria air conditioning is half a million more than was in the book. So what exactly caused those additional, that jump 50% more than we had?
The additional jump for Ward's air conditioning in the cafeteria was because a, we went out with a architect engineer who specializes in heating and cooling systems, and they are, they asked us, they recommended that we carry the 1.5 as a number, because there's multiple options and there's multiple problem, I don't want to say problem, but issues with that particular cafeteria. Normally, we would come in and take the drop ceiling down, run our duct work, and put the drop ceiling back up. However, that cafeteria, the drop ceiling is so close to the actual deck, there's not a lot of room to do that, so they're going to have to look into other alternatives. So that was their feel for-
Okay, just, yeah, I just wanted to ask, just because since we've all kind of got air conditioning on the brain in general, just looking ahead to future projects, just, you know, obviously, it's just good to kind of keep an eye on if the costs end up being more. So this is kind of more unique to the Ward cafeteria site?
Yes.
So it's not necessarily an indicator, per se, that moving forward, everything's going to be 50% more, or-
Unique to the Ward cafeteria, but also any other areas that end up being identified to having too small of a drop ceiling area to handle any duct work. We're currently going through that with the project at Sherman.
Right, well, I remember that, too, so-
Yeah, so there, we won't be surprised to find other areas-
So it's not necessarily going to be every site, but it's also not going to be a surprise if it happens somewhere else?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think that just highlights why we need to have a consultant come in, just judging from this and from what happened at Sherman. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, just a quick question on the, on the Ward project again. Talking about the schedule, uh, schedule for this project would have all the work completed during the summer recess of 2020. It sounds like there's a fear that it may be a complex process. If, if we have any other, basically, how tight can we keep this project? Can, can we do it in a way that we will be certain that it will be done in time for school to resume?
That, that is our anticipation. Once we have the engineer onboard and we design a system, it will be a matter of pre-ordering. Most, air conditioning, when it comes to duct work, is made off-site and then just kind of put together like a puzzle onsite. One option they're looking at is similar to Ludlow, which required cassettes, like they're doing at Sherman, in the cafeteria area, which would be minor work as opposed to duct work. Another option that they're looking into is actually external duct work, so it would be run across the actual roof and cut through into the cafeteria, and then well-insulated and protected above the roof. So there's multiple options, they're guaranteeing that it should be installed before school starts. Up and running may be another issue, so, but once, we've, we're, we're anticipating once this system is in, up and running is another issue that we can deal with during school time to get controls wired in and that type of stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. The maintenance move to Fairfield Avenue location. How we, what's, where, where are we on that?
So as Ms. Muntzle mentioned, we were approved at the Board of Finance meeting to, for the 141, to assist with the cost of moving Maintenance Department. We have, Phil Saron, architect, has designed the, the plans for the building. They've been turned over to the Bridgeport Fire Marshal's Office, so we are waiting for Fire Marshal review. Once we get that, we will move into the Building Department for building review. Once we get that, we will be able to start working. Our anticipation is to have materials delivered of December 2nd to do the build-out. The landlord has offered us space ahead of time to start doing some minor work, however, at this time, we cannot, because they have not finished their part of what they've agreed to before. We take ownership of it, which would be the cleaning and painting of the internal part of the building. They have, however, installed the new garage door we asked for, and replaced the existing garage door, and replaced all the metal fire doors around the outside of the building. So they are moving quickly to try to get us in there.
And we were, I mean, our hope was to move the Transportation Office into this location as early in the winter as we possibly can?
Our, our hope is to move Transportation into this office during the December shutdown, so that we're not trying to move them while they have multiple buses on the road.
And are there space heaters at the Transportation Office?
There are space heaters at Transportation.
I just want to, everyone's, you know, warm and toasty, it's getting cold.
Absolutely.
Any other questions about the move? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved the October 10th, 2019, and October 22nd, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Kind of a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitko, all in favor? It's unanimous, motion passes, eight zero. Superintendent's report. Mr. Cummings?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to talk about the budget drivers. I feel like Ms. Muntzle and I were talking about this earlier this afternoon. I think the board is very familiar, we've been talking about budget drivers now for at least two months, but I think it's important to reiterate where we are. So we are entering the budget, we entered the budget season with a projection of a, if everything had stayed the same, a 3.7% increase. Just as a review, um, the major pieces around that are salary. This is the last year of the teacher contract, for example, and that's, that's a 3.52% increase this year. Health benefits, we have a couple of contracts or open contracts that we're in the process of negotiating, so there was concern about, we had a, Ms. Muntzle had been advised, that transportation contracts, for example, might go up as much as 10%. We're in the process of that right now. We have a meeting with bidders, I think it's bidders, correct me, on Tuesday. So that may not be that drastic, but still, it's something that we are concerned about. The other open contract that is expiring soon is the field maintenance contract that we work on with, with the town. We're eager to see a new provider of that, but we are concerned about what those potential costs might be. We are looking to, uh, carry on and maintain, if not increase, the amount of funding we have for facilities and maintenance projects. It's, it's very clear that as a district, we've fallen behind, we've been hit by a couple of unexpected issues this year. So how we move forward on that and how we maintain that in the budget is going to be very much part of our budget drivers going into the next year. We anticipate that there's going to be some FTE changes, the middle school schedule is likely to have some FTE increase, but I also want to caution that, at the same time, we are very cognizant that we do have some enrollment drop-off in certain areas, and we're looking to make adjustments in FTE accordingly. The other thing I would add, that maybe, that is certainly less related to the budget, but part of what we're also looking at is some reconfiguration of positions in the district to better support district needs. It may not have a direct impact on FTE at all, but we are trying to think of ways to better need the services that, that students need. And so that's kind of, that's really where we are. Again, we've just, just completed the entering of the budget, and we are on the eve of, literally the eve of, sitting down tomorrow to begin to go review through the requests and expectations, and begin to make adjustments based on those. And so we'll be doing that over the next couple of days, and into the next month before we start to move forward. So again, the, the budget drivers is essentially what we've been talking about, and we are conscious of the fact that we are, we are working really hard to keep it as low as possible, but yet still meet the needs of the, of the district, primarily around supporting our staff, capacity of staff, and the facilities and maintenance. Those are going to be the two big issues that we're going to attempt to address. So if there's any questions?
Just, when are we going to be getting the enrollment projections?
Do we, I have to ask, because I'm not sure of this, do you usually get them before the budget?
Well, I just mean for Malona McBroom and all that, because you-
Oh, is that, that type of projection? Yeah, we, we have, I actually emailed Mr. Zubba today, because we're waiting, we wanted, I've been anticipating the, his, his, his projections as well as his options that he's ready to produce to the board, and I've not heard, I got an away message today. So he had communicated a couple of weeks ago about 10-year projections, and now I'm waiting for that next level of work from him.
And anticipate it before the next school, before January, then? Or do you expect it for December?
Um, no, I, I would expect it in December. I think the question will become the scheduling of any review of that, but I would expect it soon, because I, my understanding was that it was-
November, yeah.
Done, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And part of that, the delay, was just with the transition of possible transition of board members and a town-wide election. My thought, which I will share with you, is having Malona McBroom come and possibly invite other town bodies to attend that meeting as well. Just the last time, if you may recall, that when we had 10-year projections presented, it was presented to the board, and then the Board of Selectmen had questions, and the Board of Finance had questions, we had to bring them back. So if at all possible, and I know a lot of people around town understandably have questions about the projections, to see if we can get a date on the calendar that maybe have just one meeting, a special meeting to address these issues, might be beneficial and a time-efficient way to move forward for all town boards. Anything else, Mr. Cummings, going on? Nope, sorry, Ms. Max Canelli?
Uh, just indirectly related to the, the budget is, I was wondering at what point the conversation also turns to the district improvement plan, and even seeing a timeline, you know, even if it's not a board discussion, what is the timeline on that, since I would expect that that has some impact on a budget, which we'll be approving before we're approving a district improvement plan?
Thank you. So definitely, there are, there are, there's a couple of ways to break out the next district improvement plan. One is the things that we know we're already working on are going to continue. So there's no doubt in my mind, when you see the new budget, you'll see continuation of the comment assessment work that we've begun to support the academic expectations, you'll see work aligned around the professional development that we need to do, programmatic improvements around ELA and math, particularly the elementary, and a continued support of the SRBI at all levels. Those are all parts of our current plan, and with the change into the 2025 plan, those things all have to continue and, and grow. I, what we, what I don't, what I know you won't see yet, is other components of the plan that would necessarily perhaps extend beyond instruction. And let me add one thing to that. You also see in the plan continued work around safety and security-type issues, facility and maintenance as part of our plan. We, we know that those pieces will continue. But what, the things that we are looking to, as I've talked about, increasing stakeholder impact, input around, that input is going to be start to gather in the, I, my timeline right now is, as soon as budget is done, to begin that work in earnest. And so I think that those types of things will be gathered, and you'll see more in the 21, 22 budget as part of the plan. I do want to let you know that I've reached out to leadership in the Dalton School Business at Fairfield University to get guidance and support around building a five-year projection, both in terms of what a district improvement plan might look like, but also particularly around the budgeting issues, thinking five years out. So we've had one meeting, and I, the, I'm waiting for the date on the next meeting, but there was great interest in supporting us in this project, so I'm, you know, I get a little excited about that stuff. So I'm eager to move forward with that. So I'll update you when I have more information, more tangible information, but that is right now, moving forward.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, committee liaison reports. Ms. Pitco?
SEPTA had a meeting last night where the Fairfield Police came and presented various programs offered to students with special needs. December 2nd, they're holding A&R Workshop, Make Some Creations from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's welcome to the public. Who want to sign up? They can go right to the register, they have to register by November 30th, though, if they want to do it. And the important thing, the Cookie Walk. December 18th, here at the Board of Ed Offices on Kings Highway. 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Stop by to fill up a box with your festive cookies to bring home. Friday, December 13th, at 7:00 o'clock, in Milford, at the Parsons Complex. There is a performance from the Pine Forest Adaptive Nutcracker. Yours truly will be getting up on stage with my daughter in a tutu.
Thank you. Ms. Lieber, anything? Mrs. Gerber? PTA Council had their meeting on Monday. The big news for them right now is they are revisiting how they award their grant money. In prior years, they were very prescriptive in how schools could access that money. Now they are giving a set amount of money to each school, and PTAs can come to PTA Council with ideas. Teachers can come to PTA Council with ideas to access this funding. So for those PTAs and schools, teachers that are watching, there is money available. PTA is anxious to spend it. They end up having excess funds at the end of the year, and we just really need to get the word out of it. So out to all schools. So please share that information with other parents, with teachers. There's some exciting things going on there. PTA Council also funded Two Sensory Pathways at Jennings Elementary School in Riverfield. And they will, looking to extend that program to other elementary schools next year. The Faye Program started. They had performances this past week. They're going to take a break in December, and the performances will start up again in the early winter. They will be sharing those dates and encourage any board members who would like to attend to, to just do so. I forget the music name, but he is a recorder, Horatio. Horatio Franco. I wish you could be at PTA Council to hear these ladies talk about Horatio Franco. I think after, I mean, he is just wowed them. So with his talents, he plays multiple instruments and speaks multiple languages. And he'll be at Sherman tomorrow for anybody who's interested. That's it for PTA Council. Ms. Asa, after that?
No reports.
Anybody? Board of Finance?
No, other than just to call out explicitly, it was mentioned earlier in the meeting that they, they did on Tuesday approve that $140,000-odd dollars for the moving expenses to the Fairfield Avenue facility, for which I'm sure we are all very grateful.
We are open board comment. Ms. Lieber?
Some recognition to the Ludlow Music Department for the fantastic Veterans Concert that I was able to attend. And shortly thereafter, I was, we were all invited by Ms. DeMarco to the Senior Center Veterans Brunch, which Mrs. Vitale and I attended, and it was fantastic. And it got us thinking that there's got to be some better ways that we can get these two populations spending a little more time together. And the Veterans Concert, I think, wasn't quite as well-attended as it has been in the past. And so thinking about ways we could maybe partner with our Senior Center to get some more veterans in attendance. But it, both, both events were, were fantastic.
Anybody else? Mrs. Max Cunnelly?
I'm just wanted to, I'm sure you were going to mention this later, but, you know, who knows, mentioned it twice, but start putting the plug out now regarding our upcoming town hall. You know, that as people are hearing agenda items of interest to them, that that's, and I do forget the date, it's Thursday, December.
December 12th.
Right, so just a reminder to the public that that would be a great opportunity to come and get feedback from your board. And so put the, put the date on your calendar in what is always a busy month, I know.
Anyone else? I'd like to apologize for my comments about Horatio. Because I feel like I really did not give him his due. The board also attended CAE this past weekend. It was always exciting to, to go and hear what other districts are doing and hear about the, the future of education. We miss those board members that were out of town and not able to attend. And just would like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and thank you for all you do. Mr. Asa, do you have anything to say? You're smirking.
I just feel, I just feel the need to add that that was the liveliest PTA Council meeting I've ever been to in nine years. I, that's, I just feel the need to put that out there.
Now, we're going to go to the public now. Any members of the public like to speak to agenda items, I invite you to please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Pitco, all in favor? We are adjourned. Motion passes eight zero.